Call the meeting to order, all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, all members are present, approved of the agenda. We have two changes or two additions. Seven J, approved resolution 2025-87 ordering repair or removal of hazardous building. And seven K, approved resolution 2025-88 ordering the vacation of rental property. Is there any other changes? Counsel have any? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda with those two additions?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Heidi, second by Joe. Call the question, all those in favor signify with say and I.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five in favor, none against. Approved of the minutes of the September 3rd, 2025 regular meeting, all receive them in your packet. Is there any changes or corrections needed within those minutes? Hearing nothing, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the September 3rd meeting?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Scott, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by, I'll go Brad.
Sure.
Any other discussion? Call the question, all those in favor signify with say and I.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five in favor, none against. This brings us to our public open forum, is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Call a third time, is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Seeing no one, our public open forum is closed. We now, we don't have any public hearings, we'll then move on to report some presentations. Police Department Monthly Report, Joe?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, the August 2025 Monthly Report. Nothing super crazy as far as major incidents, it was a busy month, it was a fair month. So we had, Sturridge County Fair went off the hitch, some of the higher numbers, agency assists are up again to 18. Twenty eight medical emergencies, which was actually down a little bit from last year that time. You look at the thefts and the shoplifting, most, all those thefts that I could see were all retail based. The shoplifter, you see there's one shopper, one theft, the shoplifters called it that way because it was caught in progress. Most time we get called after the fact. Six sixty four for traffic stops, a bunch of patrols, nine welfare checks, four people went to jail on, when he went knocking on the door for routine warrants. For 1,0247, they kind of looked over everything as far as a whole for the summer, we had a really good summer as far as no major crime sprees or nothing like that, the accident numbers were down overall from years past. We didn't have, in years past, we've run into some vandalize, vandalism, sprees, nothing like that. Little bit here and there, but nothing too concerning. The parks, we didn't have too many issues down the parks, some of you may have heard, we had someone going through coolers for a couple of weeks down the campground, we put that one to bed, we caught the teenager doing that, going through people's cooler, stealing beers at night. So we educated on that. So overall, the summer was real good, I mean, we're seeing uptick right now in financial exploitation cases working on, basically people getting scammed over the phone and their credit cards, so those are kind of keeping us busy during the daytime a little bit. And we're back into that school routine now, I see that we're at the school every morning, before and after school, and we're there during the day. I know the, the school board had some initial concerns with stuff that happened in Minneapolis about our presence, but I was talking to Mr. Peschel and they're happy with what we're doing now, I mean, we're, we're in there three to four times a day, hopefully family and the public school. So, and we're at all the sporting events, so we're gonna keep doing that throughout the year to make sure everybody's safe there.
Okay.
Questions?
Any questions, concerns? Yes, sir, thank you. Public Works Department, Ben?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, this past month, we did shut down the splash pad for the season, we did winterize that, so that's completed. The bathrooms at the splash pad will remain open until early October, when all the bathrooms are closed and winterized for the year. Fitness park, we did some troubleshooting with game time on our timer issue on the forty yard dash. So we were able to confirm the parts that we need through them, so they're still working on getting us that pricing for those replacement parts. And then a plan on how to deal with the turf and get that fixed. We'll probably do the actual repair in the spring, no sense doing it this fall. Tree planting, we did plant twenty trees across Sinclair Lewis Park, JC Park and the campground, and then we'll be keeping those watered until the ground is frozen. Street sweeper issue that we discussed last month with you, the manufacturer has had representatives out several times now. They did send an entirely new pickup head for the sweeper, which we did install and test with them while they were here. We got slight improvement, but not great, so it's not done with yet, we're still working with the manufacturer on what the proper solution is for this, but we'll keep after them to get that working the way that it should be. Potholes downtown on Highway 71, we filled those along with several other areas in town that needed to be addressed before winter hits. Our salt order did arrive for this season, so that's in the shed and ready to go. The compost pile, we moved and restacked the two different piles, we have three total piles, so we moved the first and second row over, which makes room for everything that's gonna come in this fall, we have a significant amount of leaves and grass that gets hauled in during the next two months. Our brush pile, we did have a contractor that was in need of wood chips, so they came in, they chipped the entire pile, that was no cost to the city, which was very nice. We're hopeful that this can turn into a long-term solution, but it has to make sense for the contractor and their end, so we'll see how this first round goes for them, and if it was profitable, then they'll continue to do that, which is better than burning. The full depth reclamation is completed on Park Lane and Hendrick Street. The senior center, we had a drainage repair that we had to do up there, and then we did a large tar patch in the parking lot to fix some crumbling asphalt. The arena, we had several dry floor events on the weekends, no issues with those, everything's good. The last one is scheduled for September 26th, we've been doing some of the prep work on the building prior to the ice being installed in October. And then that'll go in on the 13th, starting on October 13th. We put a new concrete apron on the east side of the arena, and then the LED lights are also installed at the arena now, and the rooftop unit is scheduled to be put on next week. So, that's everything up there, is there any questions I can answer?
Questions, concerns? Okay, thank you. Planning Commission Report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, you have a copy of our agenda from the September 9th, we did have one public hearing, and there's an action item later on the agenda for that, you have a copy of the August building report and the code violations, due complaints and zoning permits. So do you have any questions on that for me?
Questions, concerns? Guess not, thank you.
Thank you.
City Engineer Report, Keith?
All right, good evening, Mayor and Council, 2025 project is moving right along. We're about eighty percent complete at this point in time. All curb and gutter, with the exception of a couple radie, has been installed. Tentatively looking at paving the remaining, that which isn't paved, basically Fifth and a couple blocks of birch and pine will be hopefully the end of next week, all kind of depends on rain the next few days and see how that all pans out, but that's a tentative schedule, so we have mostly flat work after that, so that's driveways, walk and those kinds of things. There is a fair amount that's ready, sub grade wise, for, for those walks that come in, so I have been on the discussions with the contractor regarding schedules and making sure that they're, you know, they're those are all subs who are doing that work, that they're engaged with their subs and make sure they get in here, we sort of in agreement as to how many weeks worth of full-time work is remaining, so I said that's, you know, they gotta be here, otherwise it's not gonna get done. And they've opened it all up, so they're required to get it done, required to get it restored and grass growing. Hopefully you've noticed those areas that have been restored, the grass is looking quite, quite good in most of those blocks, and so hopefully the rest of it will be that, that well as, as you get to the end of the year. Then it's kind of dormant seating and see what happens in the, in the spring, but we're, we'll hope for our best, and if, you know, if things have to get reseeded, they have to get reseeded. But hopefully not, hopefully things will work out well for that, but that's where things are at with that. At the church on Seventh Street, unfortunately, there's failing concrete tests in there, the twenty-eight day breaks did not make it where they needed to be, they're actually a fair amount short. So all that walk that's in there on the church side, basically from Ash all the way to the to the alley has to all get removed, re-put back in. My concern at this point, we've been discussing with the contractors, all right, do we tear all this stuff up? Can we get it back in in time related to all the rest of the project? Or are we better off, because there's a wedding there on October 18th as well, so there's a right in the middle of kind of a unfortunate scheduling thing, so the question is, you know, it looks to me at this point, we might be better off to leave that concrete sort of temporarily put in the boulevards and for the winter time and let it sit that way until spring and then have them come back and and tear up that stuff and redo it in spring, because I'm afraid if we try to get it, I don't think we're gonna get it done before the 18th, and I don't think we're gonna get it done after the 18th, so that's kind of the, the issues we are with the, with the church. So I think that will, you know, a temporary solution that's fairly easy to do would be, in my opinion, probably the the least risky thing for us to do at this point in time and get them back having services and all those kinds of things that they can, they can start doing. And we can get that kind of buttoned up temporarily and deal with it, you know, in the spring, so that's one issue that's hanging out there with that. Canaan Tractor Trail, that, all the curb is in in there, all the grading's done through there. So we'll be looking at getting in, putting more gravel in there, getting the driveway aprons for, for tractor supply as well as the bank in. And move forward with those and move towards paving on that one, because there's really no utilities, we'll look at probably doing both lifts of asphalt, so that job will essentially be done, you know, once it gets restored, so that can be, that, that little thing can be taken off our plate for that one. The last thing is the South Industrial Park, Mark Lee is finally coming in there to start doing that repair work, we've marked out the areas for them to mill and take out, so they'll be coming in soon to do that milling and do that repaving and getting that taken care of, so it's taken a long time for them to finally get there, but it's finally, finally gonna happen, so with that being said, I'll ask any questions you may have.
Questions?
Is the concrete in front of the, on Seventh Street in front of the church, is that the second time? What's currently down, is it the second time that we've attempted to put it down?
No, that was, that was the first, yeah, it's the first, yeah. And we have to wait to the twenty-eight day break, which didn't pass, a seven day, we had indications that it may not make it, and indeed it did not. We actually had another failing test just today that, yes, today that I received, and it also is the same supplier of material. So I've had the discussion with the contractor about this supplier shouldn't be delivering to our project, because obviously they can't they can't meet the specifications. It's not their main supplier, the main supplier is worms here in town, and we've had, you know, good success with, with them, so it's, it's really their, kind of their backup supplier if they, if they need to. But it's not going well with that, so, so we have a few driveways aprons that are gonna have to be removed that were poured with this last failing test that we got from them, so, you know, those things all have to get done, and, you know, we're starting to get short on time, so, you know, you just never know, this time of year, you could run into a whole spade of rain for days on end, and so it's, that's the part that concerns me at this point is unfortunately that flat work, and unfortunately these things that have to get removed and replaced again. We don't, we don't want those driveways like that, those, they're not acceptable, they'll more inclined to potentially crack and break on, up on people, so we don't want that. They should be the quality that is specified in the contract, so that's where we're at with those.
Did you say Keith, that I, I might not have heard it, that there was the underground heating system or the, the heated sidewalk that was included in that, that also failed, or are we able to salvage that?
There, there was a heating system on the north side of the building, the church decided not to
Okay.
replace that, so that is not included in what's, what's there now or would be in for any remainder, so they didn't, apparently they hadn't used it for a number of years actually, since it's been in, I guess it costs too much to run, so.
Yeah, one other, talking to Keith earlier today about all of this, was this pure fact that we did tell the contractor, whatever gets opened up is gonna get closed up and done and finished, and it is in the contract that it could affect their bottom line if they don't. Keakley basically has everything done, it's all their subcontractors right now that are causing the problem. So, until, but they, the main contract said anything that gets opened up will be finished. So, we do have that option where we are gonna have to probably look at that that penalty clause of that, in my opinion.
They have been reminded of that.
Yep, yeah, you know. Excuses won't cut it when it comes to this now, because I don't want people sitting without a sidewalk in front of their house or a driveway, pad.
No, it all needs to get backfilled and put back, there is a, one other thing on, if you recall, we, you know, we, those on Pine Street between Fifth and Fourth, there's some taller retaining walls through there, and those were always question of, you know, how long, if they're all gonna hold up through there. Happy to report that only one section, that's about a twenty, maybe a twenty foot section that needs to get pulled out and re, redone. We're gonna do it with just CMU block and a, and a poured core through there, and that's been gone over with the landowner, and they're, they're very happy with, with that, but you know, based though on the conditions of all of them, I'm, I'm pleased that that was all that occurred through there, but that is just the one. There's another one actually just north of that one, that the landowner themselves is tearing all that out and wants the, the yard slope back, and they're gonna get remove that big retaining wall, so, so that's, actually I just learned that today, I wasn't aware of that, so.
Okay. Any other questions?
Just one, you have a couple signs on, I think Seventh and Eighth Streets says, no, no through traffic or road under construction yet or something, is that still? What's the story there, it's been that way for a while?
Those are to try to minimize the traffic that's just going through the project, so that, because there's still work going on behind the, behind the curb, those kinds of things, there's still construction traffic happening, construction activity is happening. We normally try to keep only those who sort of live there back and forth and try to keep other people going around to other directions, so that's the reason for that.
The other day when I went by, there's, you know, there's a dump truck dumping gravel on there, using a skid loader with tracks to dump more gravel behind the curb to build up the sidewalk base and stuff like that. And I can see they don't need any more traffic in those streets, and if they got that going on, then that's why the signs are still there.
It, it's really a safety thing, trying to keep
Yeah.
traffic minimized.
So, any other questions? Okay, thank you Keith.
Thank you.
Airport Board Report.
So the Airport Board met on September 10th, it was their regular session. The, the land acquisition grant, and we can apply for that in May of 2026, so we'll be holding it until then, we can apply and then expect the issuance in July or August. The hangar grant for the, the eighty by ninety hangar, the AIP and the AIG, they're in process, and actually I have asking for approval to sign those grants later on in the agenda. We did look at our capital improvement program, there's some new requirements for runway access. May require us to make a change to our capital improvement plan and put that into our, our planning process, and it has to do with how when you come straight out from the hangars to access the runway, they want you to make like two maneuvers, so taxiway along beside it before you turn to go onto it. The land lease contracts are up for renewal, the south thirty-eight acres there, we'll see a new renter next year. We did receive a request for an easement over the eleven acre parcel we purchased on the east side of 186. That, yet because we purchased that with grant dollars, FAA has to be involved in that process. We did have a grant audit by MINDOT, they came and looked at our prior grants last week, and we came through that just fine, in fact, it worked out good for us, because we had some unfinished business. We were waiting for MINDOT to finish, and after we talked to them the next day, all of a sudden, everything was getting done. And then we do have the grant agreement for the twenty-six and twenty-seven fiscal year maintenance and operations, so that is on the agenda tonight as well.
Okay, questions, concerns? All right, then we will move on to our action items. Seven A, approved resolution 2025-83 granting variance to Schmiesing.
So the Planning Commission, acting as the Board of Adjustment, conducted a public hearing at its meeting on September 9th to consider the application of Scott and Trista Schmiesing for the variance from the maximum square foot allowed for accessory buildings and garages. The property is located at 508 Alex Moore Street. The request is to allow a seven hundred and eighty square foot addition to an existing twelve hundred square foot detached accessory structure where a maximum of twelve hundred is allowed, and a total of three thousand sixty-eight square feet cumulative when combined with the existing garage where eighteen hundred square feet is allowed. And you have a copy of the certificate of survey you can see in your packet, and the hatch mark is the addition to the back of the garage. The Planning Commission, after consideration of the request, recommend that the variance be approved based upon the findings and conditions that no evidence has been submitted indicating the location of the new structure would adversely affect the public health. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan by improving the housing stock, detached garage is allowed use in the low and medium density residential, and they're not asking for economic considerations. Conditions where no part of it shall be used for human habitation, it's null and void in one year after its effective date if not acted upon. And then of course, no application for the same or essentially the same variance shall be made within six months if it is denied. The request is actually to approve it, it's resolution 2025-83 granting the variance to Scott R. and Trista K. Schmiesing.
Questions, comments? Do I have a motion to approve the resolution 2025-83?
Oh.
Motion by Brad, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Joe, last minute discussion. Call the question, all those in favor signify with say and I.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five in favor.
I actually will abstain, as a neighbor.
All right. Four in favor, none against, one abstention. Thank you. Seven B, approved resolution 2025-84 approving preliminary 2026 budget.
So following the reductions made to the proposed preliminary budget by the City Council at the workshop on September 3rd, the updated budget leaves an overall increase to the general fund expense budget of two point eight six percent. The items that were changed at the hearing or at the public meeting, where they removed the fuel system from the street, or eleven thousand of the fuel system from the street department, added back in the summer wreck of eighty-one hundred, removed a hundred and twenty-five thousand for Morning View Shelter and forty thousand for the Hickman Trail. So that was a total general fund reduction of a hundred and sixty-seven thousand nine hundred. Special revenue accounts remained fairly flat, we did remove that parking lot from the arena and also forty-five hundred for the floor scrubber in the arena and four thousand from the purchase of a courtesy car for the airport. The debt service funds saw the biggest increase due to the new debt coming online for the bond project for the project we're doing now, for the financing of Birch and Pine. The overall revenues for the city are projected at twelve million three hundred and eighteen thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars, expenses at twelve million nine sixty-five three fifty-six thirty. The reason for the overall expenses exceeding revenues is primarily due to expending funds for the finalization of Birch Pine. We already have the revenue in the bank, we won't be spending it till next year. And then I did include an updated copy of the budget detail, and then the resolution adopting this preliminary 2026 expense and revenue budget for the city of Soc Center, which is resolution 2025-84.
Questions, comments?
I got a comment, just looking over, I had a chance to visit with Vicki today, and, and she did a fantastic job of kind of bringing me up to speed or helping me out, since it's been quite some time since I've been here. But, I'm just, the general operating budget is, you know, over the last ten years is, is nearly doubled from a one point five million to two point nine, two point eight eight nine. Understanding that over the course of an average of time, that's not a significant amount, and a lot of times that that's made up by the increase in our property values.
Right.
So that allows us to maintain the tax capacity rate of roughly forty to five to fifty percent, that's what it's been. Though my only concern about that is, is at some point, the tax valuations of our community is going to right itself, in my opinion, at some point, they can't go up year after year after year after year. So when that happens, our budget, which is nearly doubled in ten years, isn't gonna just automatically go down. That's gonna stay there, because it's operating costs, so I'm concerned about the continued rise in that. I support the budget, don't get me wrong, as it is in 2026, it's just an awareness that caught my attention, is our budgets are designed to maintain fiscal responsibility of us and for the city, and I think and thanks to Heidi here, she made light of that when we were talking at the last meeting, and I spent some time thinking more about it, so thank you. But I, and I think we're doing that by the rate, my only concern is what happens when the values become streamlined and start to drop, but our budget stays high. Then we're gonna have a prob, potential issue.
Which, you're correct, but the only thing is, is you know, we don't have that crystal ball.
Yeah.
We can't look into the future. Some of that increase on that general fund, if you look at it, wages, health insurance, all of that stuff has gone way up. It's probably, has doubled, considering most of the wages, they're anywhere from three percent to seven percent increase based on union contracts. So over ten years, I can easily see that happening.
I would hope at some point too, in the future, that the cost of, of, of businesses coming into town would make up for some of that maybe loss tax base in, in residential housing, or something would happen that makes it easier for people to build it on top of like a stagnant housing market that has just come and go, but it, new builds, new commercial market, new, all of it, that could maybe offset that, that difference or predicted idea.
One, one of the things that I'm gonna add to it, and you, you touched on it, was businesses coming into town. I remember when Walmart came into town, we basically didn't have to raise taxes for, what, six years? Because their tax base was so much that it covered most of any increase the city needed. It made the city council look like heroes, because we didn't have to increase, but, you know, that's where we need them businesses coming into town for that tax base, and as long as we're promoting Soc Center and they keep coming in, I think it, hopefully, will cover that increase, so.
I would say, Brad, I do hope that we do come to a, a level of stagnant in that tax, property tax, you know, market, but like Warren said, it's not, we don't have a crystal ball.
Any other comments or questions? Otherwise I'll look for a motion to approve resolution 2025-84.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Joe?
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Last minute discussion. Call the question, all those in favor signify with say and I.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, motion carries five in favor, none against. Seven C, approved resolution 2025-85 approving preliminary 2026 levy.
So this is the levy component that supports that budget, of course, it's not the thirteen million or the twelve million, that's the budget, but the levy is the general fund, one million nine forty-one two fifty-five, special revenue of a hundred and eighty-eight thousand and debt service of seven hundred and sixty. This is that, but it's, or Brad had said two point eight eight nine, that's actually the total levy, not the general fund budget, so it's total levy for all funds, which was twenty years ago was one point five million, so. So close, but not quite. So that is the budget that supports the, the levy that supports the budget. And then also on page thirty-one, I did put that calculation in the tax rate calculator. So that levy would increase a two hundred thousand dollar house by eight dollars and thirty-three cents, a three hundred thousand dollar house by thirteen dollars and sixty-three cents, a five hundred thousand dollar house by twenty-four dollars and twenty-three cents. And it follows on various values of commercial property. So what we're looking here tonight is to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash eighty-five adopting the preliminary tax levy collectible in twenty twenty-six.
Questions, concerns? Do I have a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash eighty-five?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Scott, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joe. Last minute discussion. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Seven D, approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash eighty-six accepting grant for airport maintenance and operations.
The city has received the maintenance operations grant to offer from fiscal year twenty-six and twenty-seven. This grant hopes to offset costs for operations at the airport from July first of twenty-five to June thirtieth of twenty-seven. The amount of the grant is twenty-four thousand nine hundred and one dollars and one penny per year. It's a reimbursement grant and reimburses the city for seventy-five percent of the costs up to that amount. So items that we would reimburse for costs would be electric bill, phone bill, cost of labor to be out there taking care of the snow, fixing the lights, those operational costs of the airport. We're eligible to get reimbursed seventy-five percent of those up to that twenty-four thousand nine oh one oh one per year. So that's this resolution twenty twenty-five dash eighty-six approving the maintenance and operations grant from MINDOT Aeronautics.
Questions, concerns? Do I have a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash eighty-six?
So moved.
Motion by Brad, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Heidi. Last minute discussion. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Seven E, authorize acceptance of federal grant hangar AIP portion.
So this action and the one to follow both have to do with the construction of the big hangar at the airport. The twenty twenty-six fiscal year grant for the hangar has been offered for approval by MINDOT and the FAA. The AIP portion is the portion that will pay through the annual entitlements that have accrued. The FAA portion for this grant is three hundred and sixty-eight thousand seven forty-seven. The state portion is nine thousand seven oh three eighty-eight. And the local portion, which is us, is nine thousand seven oh three eighty-eight. So I'm requesting that authorize the execution of the grant documents for the FAA AIP portion of the hangar project.
Questions?
Vicki, I have a question. In regards to the hangar, this is a new hangar.
Yes.
Are all the hangars in all of the buildings completely full as we speak? And we have, do we still have a waiting list? Okay.
And the box, I understand, is the preferred, right? It's has the more option to house more?
The box hangar versus the T hangar, the T hangar, the plane goes in one way and that's it. And there's no additional space. This hangar will be like where the old courtesy car garage is. And this will be designed like for an FBO. One of the options is for central planes to move into that hangar, which is larger, and then rent out the hangar they're in separately, or they may keep both hangars, or someone else may move in. So that's, that's the intent of this hangar.
Any other questions, concerns? Do I have a motion to authorize the execution of the grant documents?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Heidi, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Brad. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Seven F, authorize acceptance of federal grant hangar AIG portion.
This is also for that eighty by ninety hangar. This money is funded from the infrastructure bill that was passed from the federal government about five years ago, I believe it was. The city of Soc Center was allocated five hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars of that grant. We actually had so much a year, it's accumulated to that, and that's our max. So the FAA portion of this is five hundred and eighty-five thousand. The state will kick in fifteen thousand three ninety-four seventy-four, and the city fifteen thousand three ninety-four seventy-four. So this one as well, we're requesting permission to execute the grant documents for this portion of the hangar project.
Questions?
Both of these are in the budget, I'm assuming, for the airport budget?
Yeah, it's already funded.
All right, yeah.
Is there any other questions, comments? Do I have a motion to authorize the execution of the grant documents?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Joe, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Scott. Any other discussion? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Seven G, approve ordinance eight fifty repealing shoreline ordinance moratorium.
So the policy committee has met, and they've made recommendations on the processes to acquire a shoreline alteration permit. They did develop a brochure, kind of like a how-to and what you can and cannot do, and that has been distributed back to the committee a couple of times for review and then to the city council. We're not recommending at this point to actually amend the shoreline ordinance itself, just the permitting process for it is what we were working on. The committee recommends that the moratorium be lifted at this time. And so I have the ordinance eight fifty repealing the shoreline alteration moratorium.
Questions, concerns? I went over it a little bit with Sarah earlier and changed some language in it. But otherwise, what's the policy committee have anything? They want to comment?
I would just say that it was, you know, an effort of, you know, folks from the planning and zoning along with the policy. You know, there is a lot of, lot of input, which is fantastic. And we also looked at multiple counties and what they use for, not only their permitting, which, as we know, we follow Sterns very closely, but more of their, their notification or their informational packet, so to speak. And we believe this covers, you know, a lot of the questions. This also supports the checklist that, you know, is already part of our document that's handed out anytime anybody's doing any shoreline work. But I think the biggest thing is, is, you know, we tried to highlight the most was anytime any work is done on shoreline, it requires a permit by the city. Just doesn't really matter what it is, so to speak. It's going to require some type of permit, and it's going to require approval by the city in some fashion, even if it goes to the watershed first, still has to come back to the city. I mean, it's, our whole goal was to clarify that we have to have, you have to have a permit from the city if you're within the city and working on your shoreline. That's kind of a big goal, I think.
Yeah, yeah, I agree, and I appreciate the work that Sarah put on this and the input from the planning commission, like you said, to have multiple eyes on this and just get a really comprehensive, more of a comprehensive or educational checklist or document that is not so, doesn't leave room for a lot of, you know, questions. If it, if this is what you're wanting to do, check this document, understand there's a permit, but who do I go to? This document will tell you.
Okay, any other questions or?
So a big part of this, we talked about when we put it in place with the ordinance and the educational piece was kind of getting all the agencies kind of on the same page between the DNR, the watershed, the city. I mean, do we feel that that's been accomplished through this? Or is it so much more that we're like, hey, you need to get a permit from the city, and that's the end-all be-all? We're not worried about cohesiveness with the other agencies as much?
I think, I guess, that maybe the best answer that was is we were always on the, in our conversations, it was unclear, I think, if, does this, where does the city, what role does the city play? And that was what we were trying to define in this, not necessarily what the rules are for the watershed or other agencies, but what they need to do if they're in the city of Soc Center. I think that was our, our goal. I don't know if that answers the question. Did we personally sit down with the other agencies? I don't know if Sarah reached out to them or communicated with them, but. Okay, so that was, that's the only agency that we did reach out to.
Okay, as I say, I know we talked about consistent as far as the way the process is done and stuff. So I just want to make sure we've.
Yeah.
Feel comfortable with, with what we did. And, you know, obviously, we took a year where it's just an educational piece is all we're providing here at the end, so.
I think also to, to touch on our due diligence is that we discussed having this document sent out to all shoreline property owners twice a year. So if there is an exchange of property within a year, at some point, somebody's going to get this document from here on out.
Okay. The one question I got, and I know that what the policy committee worked on is for the shoreline piece of it, is the policy committee going to work with how we are going to handle people that just ignore the rules and go do what they want to do? How are we going to cover that penalty?
Isn't that already in our existing?
There, is it going to be enforced, or are we going to crank it up? Or I want to kind of make sure we cover all our bases. It's great to tell them how they got to do it, but if there's a few people out there that don't listen to rules and we haven't discussed anything on penalties, so I just want to know if that discussion is going to keep going on.
I do have on my checklist, and I know Sarah took a picture of it, because as we were meeting, I wrote down kind of a priority list of what we needed to accomplish to be able to lift this moratorium. One was creating this informational item, that's on us.
Yep.
Then was also, you know, supporting documentation that expounds on anything else that they might have questions about. Then there's also the contractor issue. That came into the discussion of penalties. So that was, I think, item list number three or four when we started discussing penalties. We didn't talk a lot about it, but I'm also not officially on the policy committee. So whether they, you know, continue to discuss that, I guess, is, I'm willing to do it with the planning commission if that needs to be a more in-depth discussion, but.
That might be something that I think, you know, policy committee or committee of some type sets a guideline, okay, you did this without a permit, this is what you're going to get fined. If you did this, you're going to get this.
Right on the top, I mean, it says work done without appropriate permits, we fine a hundred dollars per day if the violation is present. So I mean, that's.
Which is our current.
That's our current policy, right.
Yeah.
But.
You're asking to be very specific.
Are you asking to increase the penalty?
Holding ourselves to our own.
You clear cut a whole pair of years, it's more, going to be more than a hundred bucks, fine. Otherwise, you're going to have everybody just doing it and then say, I'll pay the hundred bucks, big deal. And we know that it's happened in a few places. So that's the reason why I'm bringing it up. I think it needs to be carried on a little farther.
I think that'll have to be developed beyond this repeal, I guess.
Well, then they got to restore it as well.
Separate process.
If they clear cut, they're going to have to replant trees. I mean, that's, that's part of the.
So you're asking like for these, these are the different types of violations, and this is your fine for that violation?
Yep.
So that would be something that would be an amendment to the code? And then you would mimic that in your, or you would put it in the code that the violations are set by council resolution? We would include it in our fee schedule at the end of the year.
Right.
So if that's something you want to do, then you do the fee schedule, the second meeting in December every year, have a couple of months to have that conversation with the planning commission.
I think it would be the thing to do.
And I think we can roll this, the information, or the verbiage that isn't currently part of our code language in that discussion too regarding contractors.
So, okay. I think general consent, we can discuss that farther. But right now, do I have a motion to approve ordinance eight fifty repealing the shoreline alteration moratorium?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Heidi, do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second by Joe. Any other discussion? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Seven H, approve advancement of EMT to paramedic.
So Harry Dunn has been an EMT with our service since August eighth of twenty twenty-four. He has now taken the paramedic class on his own. He's completed all required training, testing, and clinical hours. He has passed the national registry test and now is a licensed paramedic. The department is requesting that Harry Dunn be promoted to paramedic level one pay grade according to the current pay scale when he's acting in the capacity of a paramedic. And then he would be at EMT four level when he performs act or duties as a BLS EMT. So we're looking to advance Harry Dunn to a paramedic level one effective immediately along with EMT four when doing the BLS duties.
Questions, comments?
That's pretty impressive.
Yeah.
That he did that on his own.
Yep, do that on his own, yes. So do I have a motion to advance Harry Dunn to paramedic?
So moved.
Motion by Brad, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joe. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Seven A, accept resignation of EMT.
Jamie Olson has submitted her resignation from the ambulance service as of September twelfth. She has cited changes in her lifestyle circumstances have caused her not to be able to commit the hours necessary for this position. So we're acting to accept the resignation of Jamie Paul from the service effective September twelfth.
Do I have a motion to accept the resignation?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Heidi, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Joe. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries, five in favor, none against. And I want to thank Jamie for the years of service that she was on the ambulance service. Seven J, approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash eighty-seven ordering repair or removal of hazardous building.
So due to ongoing safety concerns at the Old Mill Apartments, the city reached out to the owner of the apartments for permission to enter and conduct an inspection. The owner signed a consent form and authorized city representatives to accompany his insurance inspector for the inspection on Monday, September twenty-fifth. Those who conducted the inspection were fire chief Jeff Bromenschenkel, police chief Joe Jensen, building official Rick Holt, and rental inspection Kelly Kerfel. Also in attendance were the owner Roger Doden, his insurance adjuster, along with an insurance engineer inspector. At the conclusion of the inspection, the city representatives provided a report back to the city, which was compiled into exhibit A of resolution twenty twenty-five dash eighty-seven. The resolution, if passed, orders the repairs be made or the building be demolished. Authority for this action is found in Minnesota State statute four sixty-three point one five and four sixty-three point two six one, also known as the Hazardous Buildings Act. The city should determine what is an appropriate timeline to give for the repairs to be made. There's a significant amount of repairs that need to be made before the apartments will be habitable. A timeline of four to six months has been discussed and may be appropriate. Apairs will, repairs will be inspected along the way under the required building permit. Items not requiring a permit will be inspected in the final inspection prior to the city council declaring the property no longer hazardous. In the resolution, and I certainly am not going to read all the items that need to be repaired, but the things that are identified were sixteen items. Fire alarm system is inoperable, the fire escape ladder is loose and insecure, water is penetrating through the roof with sky visible through the ceiling, mold is evident in multiple areas, windows are substandard, substandard suspicion of lead paint and asbestos, there's falling plaster, heaters are substandard rusted and rusted, subject to moisture, evidence of mice, cockroaches, and millipedes, floor coverings are not cleanable, appliances are in disrepair, loose and broken light fixtures, some with water seeping out of them, missing inoperable smoke detectors, suspected instability of building due to cracks, sidewalks falling away and yard slumping, basement crawl space with rusted support structure, water seepage, cut floor joists, and loose electrical wires. Common areas and private areas need to be thoroughly cleaned and sanitized, and the electrical panels are in the wet area like in the bathroom. So these are the sixteen items, and then the exhibit that is attached goes into more detail of how you need to go about what needs to be repaired within those, and I'm not going to read those tonight. So what I'm looking for tonight is to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash eighty-seven ordering the repair or removal of the hazardous conditions located at twenty-three Main Street South. And also, I would need you to fill in the blank on how much time we want to give him to do this.
Questions, concerns?
Is that Monday, August twenty-fifth, that the inspection was, just for the record?
Yeah, August twenty-fifth.
Any other questions or comments? I know each of us received the pictures. They got a hundred and ninety-five of them with explanations of what Kelly and the inspection team seen bringing us to this point. Personally, I don't see any reason why we can't pass this because obviously no one should be living in that type of conditions. The one thing is, if they, if the property owner wants to repair any of this, I think it has to be done by licensed contractors, not just themselves doing this. Because we've seen in the pictures what some of the repair jobs have looked like. And if we're going to do it, let's do it right. Especially on electrical. You know, there's floor joists down in the basement that were cut. Obviously, a contractor wouldn't cut a floor joist. So.
I mean, if they were done by themselves, I mean, they'd have to pass the inspection process and stuff. Anyways, if it doesn't pass those inspections, we wouldn't declare, deem it adequately repaired?
We would have to go through the whole, I mean, I would expect everything's going to have to be permitted, so the electrical would have to go through a state permitting process.
Right.
Then everything else would have to be some sort of a, it would come across from, you know, Sarah's table in the permit application.
If they got a permit, it would be inspected.
Yeah, so I mean, if they did the work themselves, they did the work themselves, I mean, it still would have to pass the permitting process, it was done the correct way, so.
Right.
Um, I don't know, they'd have to mandate that they're licensed contractors if he's got the abilities, and it would have to pass inspection, and can do the repairs if it's not done adequately or up to standards, it doesn't pass the permitting, he's got to redo it at a greater cost.
And if we're going to have a timeline, well, then we know there's a timeline, so, I mean, it all kind of has to fall in place, I think.
On that timeline of four to six, you've got outdoor work, you've got the bricks falling off the external, you've got windowsills. How is that going to be manageable in a winter setting?
Just a date that was recommended to me, I.
It was recommended by the owner?
Uh, no, just in talking to various people that do that type of work.
You still got at least two months, you'd be able to take care of anything that's, but if the building is sliding into the river and you got to put, put a building back and reinforce any of that, by the time, you got to get permits from the DNR, because you're next to the river, you're going to have to get permits from the watershed. You have permits from us, it's going to be quite a lengthy ordeal.
This, so yeah, this isn't just saying that this has to be done by this amount of time, we're just allowing this work to be done. If it's not done, we just continue this process of what could be the next action item.
Yeah. If they really wanted to repair it, I would think they would, could start getting permits and everything already by the end of the week. It just reinforces the reason why I push really hard to get a rental inspector on board. Because obviously, there's nobody that needs to live in this type of conditions. If you made it four to six months after the permits are acquired, they could have the work done.
Uh, I don't know if you want to say after the permits are acquired, because what if he never requires the permits, and you don't, the six-month clock never starts?
You should get a year after a permit is acquired anyways, I think, to do.
The building permits are, if it's a building permit issue, you have to do so much work every like hundred and eighty days, so you can really draw them out.
Okay.
Nine months, three months, or three years.
Kelly, do you have a recommendation based on your experience, or does the inspector on this, like, what do you think an adequate timeframe would be? Like, these are, if we give them six months to complete these repairs, I mean, you think that's an adequate timeframe?
My question too, in that, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. The removal of hazardous conditions, what does that entail?
So the hazardous conditions are all the things that we like, they don't like, the mold and the asbestos, and all of the things that are listed, those are the hazardous conditions. And so you either repair all those, and when you move the hazardous condition, or the other removal is, the building is gone.
That was my question.
So ultimately, the owner could say, I'm not fixing all this stuff, I want it gone. And typically, I hate to say in this situation, when they just want it gone, they just walk away. And then it ends up being on the city's back.
And then we have to go through the county process of condemning it and writing it to taxes and then being held to.
No, no, there's a hazardous buildings act.
We can, okay.
Procedure for that. Whether, he's got an insurance claim out there as well, so, yeah, so this just kind of sets in, in, these are the things that need to be fixed, you need to fix it within a certain period of time. You know, you either repair it, you remove the hazardous part of it, or you remove the building. So that's kind of where it's at, it's gotten to that point.
One thing right now, he's kind of got a running bill with the city right now, because we got the barricades there. Because that was even asked for from his own insurance person, from what I understand, because of the bricks hitting the sidewalk was a public hazard. So for them barricades sitting there every day and nothing getting done, he's getting the bill for those barricades, we're not giving that a free gratis thing. So I checked into that, so he will be getting the bill, so as long as everything sits there and things keep the way it is, he's getting the bill for each one of them barricades.
We can, we can work with the owner on the timeline. If you want to put a timeline in there, we can amend that in the future. If he all of a sudden comes in and says, I'm going to have it all done in three months, or it's going to take me a year, I mean, we can adjust that. We just have to put something in here so we keep this project moving forward, or the process moving.
Six months takes us to the middle of March. Probably our second meeting in March, right around that timeframe potentially.
Yep.
For us to review if we need to grant an extension.
Yeah. Four to six months for doing what it has to do, considering all the exterior, the building structure itself. It doesn't pay to do anything inside that building from what I see without fixing the outside exterior and getting that building stable. Because you can do all the interior if you want, but the minute it's moves another half an inch down the hill, because we didn't fix anything on the outside, it's all going to shift and it's not going to look the same or up to date or the way it's supposed to be on the inside, you know? It, you got to fix one before you can fix the other, and you can't do the two backwards. So. Can they do the work and get that all fixed up on the outside during the winter? I have no idea, that's with the contractor, might be able to help do that. As you can see in the pictures, some of them are three-inch cracks where that whole building is sliding. It's a four-foot drop on the back of the building, where it's the fire chief's report said that unless somebody is in that building, none of our firemen are allowed to go in to even put out a small fire. Because he doesn't deem it safe. So when the fire chief tells me that, and you guys have all been on fire departments, so you know, that's got to be serious. I'm ready for a motion.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash eighty-seven ordering the repair removal located at twenty-three Main Street within the next hundred and eighty days.
Okay, got a motion by Brad, I will second it. Any other discussion? Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Seven K, approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash eighty-eight ordering the vacation of rental property.
So this resolution is, accompanies the prior resolution declaring it a hazardous building and declaring it to be, requiring it to be repaired. This is, declares it a public, a threat to public safety. Uh, this is a separate action, and it's in, through the rental code, and it orders that the building be vacated until the repairs are made and it's considered safe to return. The same, this was at the same inspection. Uh, they do have this order, if this resolution if passed, orders the building be vacated until appropriate repairs are made to correct the deficiencies that are the threat to public safety. Authorities are granted for this action by Minnesota State Statute five oh four B, Minnesota Rules thirteen hundred point oh one eight oh, and the Sock Center City Code, chapter one nineteen, which is our rental code. Uh, in addition to the listing of repairs from the inspection, it should also be noted, there have been nine tenant complaints and various violations, including cockroaches, bedbugs, plumbing not working, water intrusion through the ceiling, and the ceilings falling. Also, I've had various complaints pass through from Stearns County Public Health since we've had the rental code in place. Uh, the city should determine the appropriate timeline again, I would imagine you would do it the same as the other one for a hundred and eighty days. Repairs will be inspected all along the way with the final inspection, or after the final inspection, a rental permit cannot be issued without the city council's approval, so they'll have to come before the city council to issue that rental license. So this is resolution twenty twenty-five eighty-eight, declaring the property at twenty-three Main Street South a threat to public safety, and further order the building be vacated.
Okay, questions, concerns?
I guess I have just one concern regarding where these people can go, and I know I've, I've been informed that there's, you know, there are public enterprises that will come in, or private charities that will come in and help. How are they informed, and how can we inform them?
So first, we'd have this information, well, it'll be served legally upon the owner. And then, usually, the Red Cross steps in, there's a couple different agencies that have in the past when, when buildings have been ordered vacated. And so we will put the word out to them, but usually, the minute it gets out, they come, they come to us, they find us, so. But what I do want to do is have you give me a, a date by which they should vacate the premises. Give them maybe a little bit of time to find alternate accommodations.
Okay. I had heard once, what, twenty days?
I'm sorry, can you please clarify the addresses on the previous resolution?
Twenty-three Main Street South?
And twenty-five.
Oh, they've got like three addresses in there. I'm looking, I'm the address that it is in Beacon and Stearns County.
Okay.
So the legal, not the mailing address, I'm talking the legal address attached to the parcel for the property tax.
Right.
I saw you should recover it.
Yeah.
Okay. I think first twenty days is what I had kind of heard was the standard to give, give them a chance to find a different place. But the more, every time I look at those pictures, I go, nobody should be in there more than one, but I understand you got to give them time.
And you may want to put a, a cold weather rule is October fifteenth?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Coming up.
And one of the things is, the cold weather rule does not affect this.
No.
It doesn't, but we'll push it.
Once a, once a building is deemed not good enough for a human to live in, or the conditions are that bad, the cold weather rule does not affect it. We can do what we need to do. It protects the ones, other people, but the landowners can't stop us because of the cold weather rule. So.
Twenty-one days would put you before the cold weather rule, and it's three weeks, if that makes any difference.
Three weeks would be plenty, I would think.
Just saying, it's still a timeline.
Kind of what I was thinking, it'll take us October eighth.
Yep.
October eighth? Okay. And then at that time, would it be October, if we set the date at October eighth, would that be the time that Kelly would put the placards up? Or would he do it now?
No, once, once, once we notify the owner, and we'll have the placards go up, and then the placard will say the date that they need to be out.
And if they aren't?
Then they're removed.
Then they're removed.
With the assistance of our police?
Police, whoever takes it. We've been made, you know, this is our first one we've had to really get into. So it's been a little bit longer than what I would have liked on doing this, because, um, when the police chief and the rental inspector find any place in the city of Sock Center that's not fit for a human, for a human to live in, they can shut it down immediately. So this could have been shut down August twenty-fifth already. But we were making sure we had every T cross and I dotted. It was kind of like telling our city officials not to do their job, but we wanted to make sure we had everything correct on the legal side. So by doing this now, there really isn't anything that we can get in trouble for. So. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
How long?
The October eighth deadline.
Okay. We have a motion.
I'll second.
From Heidi, a second by Scott. Does everybody understand the motion?
And we got the same hundred and eighty-day timeline too, that we talked about.
That they can, uh, remove and move back in?
This is to remove the people, the people have to be out of there by October eighth, if not sooner. And then that gives them plenty of time, so. Any other discussion? Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, motion carries, five in favor, none against. We have no unfinished business. We have new business of digital payments.
Uh, just kind of FYI, the federal government is moving, they're phasing out paper checks as of September thirtieth. If you expect a check from the federal government, it's going to come digitally and not through paper. Uh, the benefits they're saying is to cut fraud costs and delinquent accounts. As you know, that we've been migrating to paperless as well, we have approximately seventy-five payments are made now through, we push money through ACH, and like, payroll is all direct deposit, we make payments to vendors, it's ACH. Uh, as the federal and state governments moved to a hundred percent paperless, we, uh, it's our intent to move that direction as well. Uh, we will at a future meeting have a resolution of representing it to the council to say that payments will be made via ACH in the future, kind of on that same timeline as the federal government, uh, by January first. And most people that we reach out to, everybody's happy to do it. There's just a few people that, um, when we send ACH, you get an email that says, ACH has deposited from the city of Sock Center on this date and this amount for this invoice. But somehow, not everybody likes to do it that way digitally, so it hits their bank, they don't know what it's for. Or they may get multiple ones in a day, and they don't know what it's for, and so there's been a little resistance. But I think once people get set up, they'll be fine, so we'll work with them on that. I just wanted you guys to be aware that that's something that's being worked on, so you don't get caught off guard.
Is this a requirement for even like the PUC to change public utilities?
It's not a requirement.
Okay, all right.
The federal government, the state, they're going, they're requiring it. It's up to the council or the PUC whether they want to require it, it's just a staff recommendation, is that we follow theirs and do it as well.
Okay. All right, that's just information. We'll then move on to our consent agenda, we have scheduled claims, unpaid claims, three hundred and seventy-eight thousand nine hundred and eight dollars and thirty-nine cents. Paid claims of twenty-nine dollars, for a total of three hundred and seventy-eight thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars and thirty-nine cents. August checks, paid claims and payroll of two million ninety thousand, two, yeah, two million ninety thousand five hundred and thirty-six dollars and forty-seven cents. We have a gambling application for an exempt permit request from the Senator Matt Youth Wrestling Club for a raffle on December thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, at Sock Center High School. Is there any questions on the consent calendar as presented? Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Scott.
I'll second.
Second by Brad. Last minute discussion. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Informational items.
Uh, just to remind you that at the next meeting on October first, we'll be having the public hearings for the Birch and Pine Project, uh, the Park Lane and Hendricks Reclamation Project, and the delinquent accounts, and they have all been mailed individual notifications of their dollar amounts. So everybody has been notified, it's been published. We may or may not have a good showing at the meeting, I can't say. Uh, you also have the spectrum channel lineup changes that are in your packet, and then a third thing I wanted to add, that at the Art on the Avenue uh, in two weeks from now, uh, MINDOT will be having a tent there to talk about the Chalk Highway seventy-one, to answer questions that people may have, so you can feel free to stop by the tent, we're going to try to have some, some renderings up, uh, just kind of, and answer questions and gather input from the public. And also to pass out a flyer, how you can QR code into the MINDOT website, or how to access the website that walks you through the process, so. Just a moment of information there.
Okay. Questions on either one of them? Okay, that brings us to the end of our agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Joe, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Scott. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against, meeting adjourned.